We're calling the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please, Melli.
Elder Person Henry?
Here.
Elder Person Schaefer?
Here.
Elder Person Jackie?
Here.
Elder Person Wilkin?
Here.
Elder Person Price?
Here.
Elder Person Berg?
Here.
Elder Person Grimmer is excused. Mayor Eiker?
Present.
Administrator Hefner?
Here.
Alright, thank you. First order of business is a public hearing. So, a public hearing is about City of Dellafield 2025 Proposed Budget and Tax Levy. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear public comment on the proposed 2025 City of Dellafield Budget. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this public hearing? Please step forward.
I have pictures.
You can hand them out, please, and turn on your mic and state your name and address, please.
That's alright.
I'm a visualer. My name is Kathy Sitters. I live at 2550 Genesee Street in Dellafield. My comments today are on the proposed bike walk path. This path started with its purpose to be able to walk around the lake, and I think that we should refocus on what the path is actually for. I think it should do two things. One, it should lead people to our beautiful downtown, and two, it should lead people to our beautiful surrounding parks. The path won't connect around the lake because Neshora has no interest in continuing it. So, why we're pursuing a path and spending money that is of today, a path to nowhere. It's not like walking around Fowler Lake and Oconom Walk where you get to enjoy the beauty of the lake. You can't even really see the lake from the path. You're basically walking along busy streets on one side and people's front yards on the other. One of the great perks of living in this area is the park systems. Shouldn't we be more concerned with connecting our community to the beautiful parks where we can walk in nature and not by a city highway or taking privacy away from the city people? Lap and Peak put in a beautiful blacktop path, and it's less than 10 feet wide, and there's plenty of space for everyone to walk. This path should connect the surrounding communities that are in walking distance to the downtown area to support our stores, our restaurants, and our community activities. Stopping the path at Woodland Park Road connects the final subdivision east of the city limits and saves the city money. So, now to the pictures. Picture one, this is my neighbor's house. If I lived here, I would not be opposed to the path because my house is far enough away and you have the path running right up by the road. Picture two, oh, are we all on the same page? That's my neighbor's house, really far away from the path. Picture two, this is my house. My house sits very close to the road. Picture three, see that big black? That's your blacktop path going right through my front property. And picture four, I don't have that picture, but that picture is, yep, that one, right along that tree line. I am proposing that I would like the path to go on the other side by the road. The landscape around these pictures has absolutely nothing to do with me not wanting the path where it's proposed. The effect of the path that close to my front entrance of my house and the privacy invasion and what it will do to my property value are my main concern. So, I encourage each of you to envision looking out your front door with people and dogs walking a little over 30 feet from you whenever they want. I ask you, when you purchased your home, did you envision that? I did not, and had I known that was going to be part of the plan, I might not have bought there. How would you feel about the city you've lived in, the city you've raised your kids in, the city you've supported through your small business for over 30 years, having absolutely no problem doing that to your property? You're proposing a similar path down Oakwood Drive to properties that are similar than mine and houses even closer to the road. How close would you put that path to their houses and at what point does it cross the line of not being okay? So, I ask you to go back to the drawing board, put the focus on a path that leads people to the downtown areas and to the park systems, and this path around the lake, it just doesn't make sense anymore. So, let's lead by Tiger Woods' example. In the middle of a major tournament, he sets up to hit his tee shot, and he starts his backswing, and just as he reaches the top, he stops. He pauses, he brings the club back down, he repositions himself, he refocuses, and he starts again. He hits an amazing tee shot, middle of the fairway, sets himself up for an awesome second shot. Did he win the tournament? Doesn't matter. What mattered was that he didn't like his trajectory, and he did something about it and changed the course. Maybe we should take a lesson from Tiger. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy. Would anyone else like to speak to public hearing number one about the budget? Yes, Mary.
Good evening, Mary Daniel, 309 Wisconsin Avenue here in Dellafield. Couple of things I'd like to speak on are the capital improvements, streets and highway improvements. The Oakwood Drive path, which is Hillcrest to Genesee Street, construction and engineering costs are $128,000. As a taxpayer, I don't think this proposed path is necessary because Oakwood Drive has a path that has a crosswalk that connects to Hillcrest Drive and a crosswalk that connects to Genesee Street one block north, which is a cross from Christ the King Church. The Genesee Street path, Carriage Hills to Scenic Drives, you have three cost options to consider as a taxpayer, I believe. The option to stop this project short at Woodland Drive is just fiscally prudent. The other path I'd like to talk about is Oakwood Road, the other side of the lake. Nagawicka Road to State Highway 83. The design construction for this, no path, just the design work we ask our engineering firm to do is $45,000. Under parks, public buildings, and facilities, there's a line item, tree planting for Oakwood Road path, 27-5. They're taking that money from the tree fund and putting in for a matching grant, which would bring that project to $52,000 plus. My question as a gardener and a taxpayer is, why are we planting trees before we have an engineering design which would include where the public right of way is, utility right of ways, drainage issues, and that type of thing? So, I've always believed in doing my hardscapes before I did my planting, but that's just me. So, thank you, everyone. This is not an easy task. I trust you to do the best job possible.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary. Good questions. Anyone else like to speak to public hearing number one about the budget? And knowing everyone's busy thinking or worrying about the election, we've got a week or two weeks before we meet again about the budget, so I encourage people who have questions to reach out to their older people, and if you'd like to reach out to me or any staff at City Hall, please do so. At this point then, I see no other questions for public hearing, so the public hearing is now closed. Item number five, minutes. Minutes for the last two meetings, the last council meeting and the special meeting will be ready for our approval at the November 18th meeting. And then, from there, citizens of Dellafield, citizens' comments, or City of Dellafield comments about anything else on the agenda are open right now, if anyone would like to speak. Three, two, one, citizens' comments are now closed. Consent agenda. Would anyone like to move on the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, or abstentions? Okay, consent agenda is now approved, so if you're here for anything regarding the impact fee schedule, it would be the city's business, Nagawicka Heights, and the dedication for public property, or two things on Nagawicka Heights, you are free to go, or you can stay. Alright, boards, commission, and committees' reports, licenses? No licenses. Plan commission, we did have a plan commission meeting just last week, and the representative, Matt Grimmer, is not here. I was present, and there is some good discussion about several items that you'll find in the minutes. Please reference those. Our next meeting's going to be at the end of the month, or actually, early. It's third Wednesday in November before Thanksgiving. Lake Welfare Committee?
We'll be meeting next Wednesday.
Alright, Park and Rec Tree Board?
We submitted our matching grant application for the tree planting. When I say "we," I mean our hardworking city forester, Sean Heinzel, and it's about all the news from this meeting.
Alright, thank you. Public Works?
No meeting, no report, and this month's meeting for tomorrow night has been canceled.
Gotcha. Delhart Commission, we have a meeting for, or the third Tuesday of this month. Police Commission?
No meeting, no report.
Alright, Library Board?
No meeting, no report. We meet next Tuesday.
Moving along. Alright, Zoning Board of Appeals?
No meeting, no report.
There we go. Public Promotion and Tourism Commission?
We have not had a meeting since our last Common Council meeting. However, we have a meeting for promotion and tourism next Tuesday morning, 7:30, right here.
Very good, thank you. Lake Country Fire and Rescue, that's Elder Person Grimmer. I do not believe there was a meeting for them either. Deer Management Committee, Elder Person Wilken?
The committee met on October 22nd. Two items of business, it was reported that so far, the hunting activities have resulted in the harvest of four deer, and the committee is still in pursuit of somebody to fill the vacancy created by Alderman Berg.
And I have a brief update on that. We're pursuing an option to change our code based on how we are demanding that we have Park and Rec and Public Works Committee members represented. And it's not too taxing, it's just they might not, we might be selecting from a big enough pool, so we might be changing that, so look for that in an upcoming meeting. Other committees, commissions, and boards, none, unfinished business, I don't believe we have any. Mayor's Report, I will give a quick recognition to some people who've been here for a while. We've got two people from our library, Beth North, who's celebrating her second anniversary as a full-time employee, and Jane Snow is here for her sixth year. And we've got Adam Rencheck, who's celebrating ten years as a Public Works employee. And not to be outdone, going higher in tenure, we've got Kimberly Keel, who's celebrating her 11th year as a police officer, and Steven Shrubey. Alright, it's going to be 18 years, and then there's another guy called Landon Nearen, who's going to be 18 years as well. So, congratulations, chief. Thanks for your loyalty and support. And on top of that, I have some sad news. Those of you who may have have a decent memory and recognize the fact that we're in these beautiful buildings, former city administrator Tim Shenkey passed away about 10 days ago. He was our city administrator from 2008 to 2012, and he took over during a somewhat contentious time with a previous situation and was a steady hand at the helm during the construction of these buildings and brought us in under budget, and was a great mentor to lots of people, including, I'm sure, Tom Hefner, as well as myself, and shared a lot of pearls of wisdom, and so his sage advice is appreciated. And his service will be through the Pagenkamp Funeral Home this week at November 8th. So, look it up. It's easy to find, Tim Shenkey, but so keep his family in your mind and him in your prayers. But appreciate all the work he did and what he taught me. He taught me a lot. Aside from that, I'll have to also say that we have come to a consensus on the Lake Country Fire and Rescue budget proposal, as far as what everyone's at least going to be proposing to their boards. So, we'll be seeing that final proposal, as I shared with some of you via email this week. And on top of that, we've got a scheduled appointment to all meet to launch our efforts to see how we're going to lock arms and walk into the future together with a consensus of a good plan to carry our best interests as a community of seven municipal members forward for our fire protection with the Wisconsin Policy Forum. First week of December, we're all meeting together to kick off those discussions. First week of December, we're all meeting together to kick off those discussions, so look for, look for more from that, from, from the mayor's office and from Tom. So, with that, my mayor's report is concluded. And new business, possible discussion regarding the proposed twenty-twenty-five budget and public comments received during the public hearing. That'd just be discussion of what we'd like to see or hear, knowing that we're going to be going through this with a fine-tooth comb in two weeks. Does anybody have anything to add, other than what we've heard tonight, and invitation for our constituents to reach out to us and share their thoughts?
I, I do, I do appreciate the comment about that path. I've gone out and looked at the route and the logic behind it. There's so many things that were stated. The visuals were, were great, but if you actually go out and stand there, it makes a lot of sense if you're going to do the path to not push it into the property as deeply. But I think it makes more sense to stop before you have that last tiny bit. I know in conversation, I think it was at our budget workshop, we talked a little bit about the path. And I do understand that maybe down the road, Neshota might, or, change its mind. That said, I think the constituent made a really, I don't know, an important point that you can't see the lake, and I really, it would caught my ear, and I wrote it down, was the idea that maybe, you know, we've been, the, more than a decade of an uncommon council, we've been very keen to do this path around the lake, even though we can't see it the vast majority of the time we're on that, which is fine, but connector paths to parks really, really ring as a sensible thing to stand back, à la Tiger Woods, and maybe think about this last little piece that were, that was considered before we put money in and, because this has been the concern for a lot of my constituents in District Three with paths coming, city right-of-way or not, its logic and respect to taxpayers and to, would you want, would you want that? I doubt it. So maybe we can find a more sensible thing. So I just wanted to bring that up. I really appreciate it, some very good points that I hadn't thought about.
Anyone, anything else?
I just, I would like to comment on the path as well. I understand the, the, that it, it is a long-term goal to get all the way around the lake, and that even extending this as far as we can now is not going to mean that that's going to happen anytime soon. However, that is the plan, it has been the plan for as long as I've been watching it, and stopping it short when we have these extra funds coming in would be leaving free money on the table that we would probably never get again. And as someone who lives on the other side of the lake, I would love for there to be a path around the lake that I can go, and even getting it as far as it can go, I ride my bike, I walk around the lake, I do, not for the view, but for the exercise and, and the distance. I can't do that right now, and there's something very different about walking halfway, you know, walking to Della Field and then walking back versus walking all the way around the lake. The other thing is, I used to live in Neshota, and there is no real safe way to get from Neshota to Della Field. I would have loved to have walked down that way to go downtown and see that as well. So, I think it's important, even if it's not connecting now, that we do what we can to take the free money that is available to us now, at the cost that we can get it now, because prices are going to go up and we're not going to have this free money later. So, that's my pitch.
Tom, did you get a response yet on that, grants? If we were to shorten that path, if it would affect the money?
I have an email into the DNR, and I'm waiting a response. I asked for a response by the end of this week.
Okay. Thank you. As a part of the open comment section here, I'll just, I'll just say that when my wife and I built our house in two thousand, I'd say that it was not a regret or short-sightedness or anything, but one shortcoming that was in front of us was that my girls couldn't walk to Cushing School, which is about a mile and a half away, and I walked two miles to school on sidewalks in Wauwatosha. But there's a long game to be played, and most of that path that would, that enables people and my, my neighbors' kids to walk to Cushing School is there now. And it's, it's segment by segment, year after year, decade after decade, and things happen. So, that's something to keep in mind when we continue this discussion at our, at our budget hearing in two weeks. So, anything else? We have a gigantic budget, and this is, I know this is an important issue, but it's one topic.
The, the, I understand the trails is a, it's a long-term plan. We have to spend wisely and spend, you know, we can't just finish the whole thing at once, and it would be a shame to leave money on the table, and we do have a grant available. We have the same consideration with the tree plantings, like, there's potential of grant available now, might not be available later. The timing is important. Are there, are there some ways we can fund to accelerate the plan, the trail plan? We've been using the generous money that comes in through the hotel tax, the tourism tax, and that money has increased over the years. It's been about sixty percent increase over the last ten years. The city's quality of life projects, share of that has gone down over the same time. The state requires us to do things that, with that money, that'll promote tourism, whether it's marketing, or the visitor center, or, you know, hard developments in the city that'll help attract. So, could we use some of that money to accelerate some of these, these trail segments?
Those are good points, Mark, but they're more conceptual than actually dealing with the practical budget that's actually a document. I mean, we're supposed to talk about the budget, but I get it. You know what I mean? Alternative funding sources are not in the, in the topic, but, so, good, good thing to bring up, but.
It's just a matter of where that, where that tourism budget is being spent. Some of it is being spent for trails. Could it be more?
Anything, okay.
Sorry, specific to Mary's question with the conception, or, for the tree planting and everything, that had been a question I brought up the first time this grant was proposed, is, are we getting ahead of ourselves as far as where these trees are going? And my understanding, the answer that I got at the time was that there's really only, there's really only one place that they could go, right? That we, you already are aware of where the path would be, so planting these trees is not going to interfere with any long-term plans to where the path would go. Is that correct, still?
Yeah.
That was my understanding.
It's the southern border of the park along the road, and the city forester laid out a, a rough plan with the trail path, as well as the trees on both sides.
I think it'd be prudent to share the, the, where the grant, with the plans for the grant, I think it'd be prudent to make sure that that's highlighted in our budget discussion in two weeks. Make sure that we understand that that wouldn't be something that would, is that something we have available, Tom?
Yeah, the, the drawing is actually in the budget book, or not in the budget book, but in the online budget document. There's a file there for the drawing. Both the city forester and myself did recommend that the more typical route to go, and probably the better route to go, would be to put the path in and put the trees in afterwards, but the Park and Rec Commission preferred to put the trees in as soon as possible, to try to get some growth with the trees, given the fact that the path isn't scheduled to go in until twenty-twenty-seven. I think our thought was, if you put the path in first and then the trees, you're for sure not going to be damaging tree roots, things like that. And I also thought that if you put the trees in after the fact, you can plant them closer to the path, be more certain that you're not going to be damaging them, create more of a tunnel effect, which would be pretty cool going through the park. But the Park and Rec Commission felt very strongly that we should apply for the grant this year, see if we get it, and, and move forward and get the trees in the ground as soon as possible if we do get the grant. Is that a fair summary, Mark?
Yeah, I was weighing the, the value of the matching grant, as well as the value of the extra three or four years' growth of the trees. It probably takes ten years before you really notice those trees anyway. They're, they're, they're not big when they go in, so you, you lose a few years if you, if you put it off and potentially lose the grant, so, yeah, it was a pros and cons.
I think we're going to revisit both of these topics in two weeks. Anything else someone would like to talk about for the budget at this point? All right, again, anyone listening or interested, please reach out to your older people or city staff if you have questions about the budget, want to know where it is, how to, how to digest it, we're happy to help. All right, eleven B, discussion, possible action of digital chalking and permit verification for parking enforcement. I think we have a police chief who'd like to help us with this topic.
Well, thank you for having me. I will save you the time of me just reading verbatim the memo that I included in the minutes, or in the, the packet. I'm just here to ask for your input as we're looking at implementing a automated license plate reading system, and it would be utilized in the downtown for the three-hour parking and at the Bleecker Street boat launch for permitting. This would alleviate officers from walking car to car, placing a tire chalk mark on each vehicle, and then coming back three, four, five hours later, verifying those chalk marks are still there, and then issuing a citation based off the chalk marks. This newer system still involves an officer visualizing each vehicle. The system can be, it's all cellphone-based, it would, can be mounted on the dash or handheld as the officer does business checks in the downtown. The only difference is, instead of a physical chalk mark, it geolocates the vehicle, takes a picture, and then when you go past three hours later or more, it notifies the officer if the vehicle's in the same spot and gives them a picture to verify. So, this would not be an automatic ticket issuing system, this would just give us a tool that would allow us to take our chalking time from forty-five minutes down to five minutes. So allowing an officer to, to be on the road longer kind of gives us that multiplier, force multiplier for doing a task that on a lot of days, we just don't have the time to complete, and I know is important to the downtown business owners. The system would also allow us to enter in our permit list for the Bleecker Street boat launch, and if we moved to it in ordinance, could even go to a sticker list system for permitting based on license plates, where it would just allow the officers to still walk through the launch, because it doesn't really allow you to drive past every vehicle, but just automatically verify the license plates of permitted vehicles in there as well. And so, the reason I wanted to come to council is anytime we're considering an automated camera-based system, I'd like to get the input of the council on the community's views regarding these types of systems, and that's what brings me here today. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I, of course, have a comment. You know, just thank you, this is something that has been an issue for many of our downtown businesses, and I'm sure they will appreciate it, and I just appreciate the fact that you were dragging us into the twenty-first century. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I, I'll comment the fact that I think the physical marking of tires is, some people might rather have a fifty-dollar ticket than a mark on their tire. But is there, I'm going to go on the assumption that there's no compelling incentive for officers to issue tickets to make up for the, what is it, fifty dollars a month we're going to pay for this? This is something that's going to be available to us based on that six-hundred-dollar-a-year budget to say, if there's people that are violating, this is, just facilitates that?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's good. Can I ask how many parking tickets roughly a month you guys are issuing across the year?
It's not a lot, I'm going to be honest. We issue, when the officers are able to get out there, they can issue between three and nine on a day. However, with staffing and, you know, even taking weather into account and other calls for service, they're usually only able to get out there maybe once a week.
Sure, okay. And parking in our city lots is all day, right? There's not, okay, so it'd be a, it'd be a really good booster reminder to say, park here, if you're going to be here all day, park here.
Yes.
So there, okay. So we're looking for a motion to approve this electronic tagging parking enforcement.
I shall move.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, thanks, chief, for bringing this up.
Thank you.
And again, thanks for your eighteen years of work.
Thank you.
All right, item eleven C, approval of vouchers and payables.
I move to approve the voucher list.
I'll second.
I'm going to go with Jacob. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, or abstentions? Okay, voucher list is approved. Report of city officials, Mr. Hafner.
The only thing I was going to talk about this evening, Tim already touched on, and that is the Wisconsin Policy Forum kickoff meeting that we finally have on the calendar with our Lake Country Fire and Rescue partner municipalities, and I'm just very excited about it and hoping that this finally provides the impetus necessary to provide some solutions and some long-term, long-term cost sharing that works for all the communities.
All right, thanks, Tom. Molly, anything going on these days?
There's an election tomorrow.
All right.
We wrapped up absentee, the in-person absentee on Friday. The stats are significant compared to what we normally do. We normally do twenty-five to thirty percent absentee, both through the mail and in person. We have a total of three thousand two hundred and sixty-four absentee ballots return, which does include the mailed and in-person absentee, so that's already a fifty-eight-point-three percent voter turnout. That being said, we do still expect tomorrow to be busy. We do tend to have a high voter turnout in the city of Della Field, so we shall see how that goes. We do, obviously, you can see we have the Badger Book set up, so that does make the wait times significantly less, as long as they're up and running. So, we are going to, this would be our first larger turnout for an election here, so we will be making adjustments as necessary on the fly if we see lines to try to accommodate those situations, but that is all. Polls open at seven and close at eight tomorrow, so we'll see you then, for those of you who haven't voted, which are very few of you.
Thanks, Molly, and I'll just, I'll just add, be patient, respectful. Everyone's in it for the same goal, so let's be, be kind to those of us that are all helping and those of us that we disagree with. From there, item D, any council requests for future agenda items? We'll meet again in two weeks, so anything comes up, reach out, okay? Correspondence is in the packet, I don't think there is any in there, but aside from that, seeing no further business, we're now adjourned at seven-thirty-four. Thank you all.